All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi. Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
All right, good evening. All right, so we are going to open up our meeting this evening with some very important business. First, we need to wish our peace delegate, Pat Lovelace, a happy birthday this coming Saturday. So.
Love it, love it, love it!
Great. And that is the only change I think we have to our agenda this evening. Moving forward, looking at our agenda in the future, a reminder, this Friday, May 19th, we have a community coffee from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Los Pollos Restaurant at 6842 New Hampshire Avenue. Councilmember Mayo and I will be there, so I hope you can join us. On Saturday, May 20th, it is the Celebrate Tacoma Festival from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then we are back here on Wednesday night, May 24th, at 7:30 p.m. That day, we will recognize Gun Violence Awareness Day with a proclamation. Gun Violence Awareness Day is actually on June 2nd, but we'll recognize it on May 24th. We have a voting session. We'll have a resolution renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have a first reading ordinance authorizing an FY 2017 budget amendment number three. Spoiler alert for my colleagues, please take a look at that before the weekend because it's a pretty hefty budget amendment, so.
Sorry, I didn't look at it.
Okay, look at the budget amendment. Next, there's a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract agreement with Cheer for the Lunch and Learn Summer Program. A single reading ordinance authorizing the repair and upgrade of the auditorium and projection system. And resolutions providing for appointments to committees. Our work session on Wednesday, May 24th, Mr. Lovelace, we have an update from the Folk Festival next week on May 24th. We will also have a discussion of city traffic calming practices and recent projects, and a discussion of police officers at city council meetings. Then, we will not have a meeting on Wednesday, May 31st, so please don't come here. And then, on Tuesday, June 6th, we will have another community conversation regarding Montgomery College, their building of a math science building, and that will be at 7:30 p.m. And I actually, our ruling agenda says it's going to be in the Azalea Room, but I think it's actually going to be at the college.
We just actually learned this evening that it's going to be held in the Science North Building on the college's campus in room SN 100.
Okay, we'll get that changed on the ruling agenda. Then, on Wednesday, June 7th, we'll have a public hearing on bond issuance under Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program to finance the library and community center renovations and roadway streetscape improvements. So it's a public hearing on June 7th. And then, our voting session on June 7th is a first reading ordinance authorizing bond issuance under Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Program to finance the library and community center renovations and the roadway streetscape improvements. And we will have the second reading ordinance authorizing FY 2017 budget amendment three. And then, the following weekend, just want to let people know, on Wednesday, June 14th, we have a reception to honor Sue Silver. She is retiring as the city attorney, and that reception will be from 6:30 to 7:30 before our regular meeting.
June 14th?
Yes, June 14th. And also, we have been, as we finish up the budget, we've been working on putting together a schedule for further discussions regarding the police department, specifically the search for a new police chief. We've been emailing on council about a good process and approach, and I think by the time we have our next meeting next week, we'll have some of those meetings on our ruling agenda and a discussion of how we want to proceed on that. So I think that's all for upcoming agenda items. Next, we'll take public comments on voting items. Our first voting item this evening is a second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 tax rate. Do we have any comments on the tax rate this year? No? Next, we have our second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 stormwater management budget. Any comments on that? Next, we have our second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 budget. Any comments on our budget this year? Okay, Ms. Machui, come to the podium.
Ms. Machui, Ward 2. Hi, I'd like to have some things changed, like, for instance, I probably offend, whatever I say, offend somebody, like, the library. I don't see why it needs to be over $7 million. And I'd rather have money, I heard from one of the council people, that maybe you'll have money for one class for people with disabilities. And I wish you would do that and follow through with that money for that, which certainly won't be $7 million. I would like something relieved, something done about all these abandoned houses that get bought by developers and sold for $600,000 and more. My neighborhood is changing, to me, the worst. It's like, it's very racially segregated, the city, and more and more since the 31 years I've been here. There's mostly upper-middle-class whites moving into the houses, and the poorer, darker-skinned people in the apartments, and it's come more and more in the 30, actually, more than 31 years I've lived in there. And I don't think it's very healthy. And I think we shouldn't be pointing our fingers at third world countries when this is essentially becoming somewhat that, somewhat. And I wish something could be done. I think Mr. Mayo had mentioned something, sounded like a good idea, maybe doing to Billy Biden these houses. And somehow, now they're working with HRC, Montgomery County, and so, first-time owners and people of lower income can afford a house. I'm not asking for a mansion, just a little house that they could afford, you know, just a modest house. And please, please, this is personal now. Help my son get a decent job. He's really, he's killing himself. He really is. He's prediabetic, he's got high cholesterol, he's depressed, he won't take his medicine. He doesn't know when it, whether he goes to job, to work until the day before, and that's very common with people, his condition. And it's sad. He should have a job where he has a regular schedule and a decent salary, like, everybody, everybody should have that. Thank you very much.
Any other comments this evening on our FY 2018 budget? And then, we have a resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the FY 2018 budget. Are there any comments on that? And then, our final item tonight is a consent agenda, and it has in it a resolution providing for appointments to the Arts and Humanities Commission, and a resolution providing for appointments to the Grants Review Committee. Any comments on that? Okay, then we'll go to general public comments. Any other public comments on other items? Mr. Lovelace?
Hello, everybody. This is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I just want to tell everybody out there, if they don't know it, today is National Police Week. We should thank our policemen for everything they do for us, in making our day safe and secure. We've got to think about each day, the improvements the police have made for us, and I really appreciate the help the Tacoma Park Police and the other police have given me over the years. And I want to wish them a safe and happy Police Week. And I want to wish them a very safe and happy weeks everlasting afterwards, and I want to see what we can do to make their jobs easier. Also, do you know that today, seven years ago, you people made me the official peace delegate, May 17th, 2010? Doesn't seem that long ago. And I enjoy serving you people very much. You people have made my life much, much more richer than it would have been otherwise. I enjoy carrying the peace sign at the city events. I enjoy the Fourth of July parades. I enjoy talking to the kids about it. I enjoy speaking at the city council meetings, and I enjoy also to show words of peace that I put on, which usually comes on after the meeting. And I'd like to ask everybody out there to do what they can to work for peace. I've been doing it for 37 years. I should have been dead by now, but thank God I'm not. They told me I wasn't going to make 33, but it's been touch and go ever since. And my life, I'm really grateful that I have it. A lot of people said they wouldn't want to be alive if they're in my condition, but they really don't know what my condition is. It's a lot better than death. I really appreciate, because I can still do things for people. People may think I'm not, I got nothing to offer, but they can look at Tacoma Park and see that I do, they do have, I do have something to offer. And they can do the same thing for their cities and their communities, too. Because all the friends I had when I was running around with the wrong crowd, they don't mean nothing to me anymore. They all left me. All the friends I have now, I've met through the city or through the peace movement, every single one of them, and they've helped me, and they've saved my lives numerous times. And I want to thank you people out there for letting me serve you as a peace delegate, and I want to continue doing that. Thank you very much. And also, to the police officers out there, have a safe and fruitful life. Okay, thank you very much. Happy Police Week.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Casey Kostick, Ward 3, and Chair of the Safe Roadways Committee. I just wanted to speak briefly about the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way Plan that is going to be presented on later today. I just want to thank the city staff and the city council for the opportunity for the committee to review and give some input on the plans. It was great to work together with them, and we also appreciate the firm RK&amp;K working with us and giving some input back from our comments that we got. We feel like this is a really exciting project that fills a need in the city. There's a gap, significant gap, in bike infrastructure, particularly on New Hampshire Avenue, and so, we would encourage the city to take this seriously and seek out funding opportunities for it so that it can become a reality. I'd also like to encourage you, as you look at this and other bike infrastructure developments, that you also consider ways to connect to other key destinations in the city. So, looking at connecting this, this plan to the Crossroads Transit Center on University, as well as to Ethan Allen, so that bicyclists can continue in their route to Old Town Tacoma, as well as to the Rec Center, which is on the way, but on the other side of the street from this proposed plan. So, thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
I'm Margot Bass. For 17, sorry, for 17 years, I've resided on Elm Avenue. I am here about the potential June sale of two large properties in Ward 3. The sales are of urgent public interest for Tacoma residents. Both properties lie in quiet neighborhoods and could fulfill long-term county and resident needs. The city is the landowner with the largest abutting property at both sites, holding treasured green spaces. I ask the city council to hold an emergency public meeting about the sales, and to have the city lawyer provide counsel on the properties on their confusing zoning status, liens, and development options. One property is five acres, the Washington McLaughlin School at 6501 Poplar. 24 Tacoma Park residences abut it. On the north boundary lies Dorothy's Woods, the city-owned Cove Forest. The property has a tiny frontage on New Hampshire and an active stream bed. Montgomery County has seized the property for tax debt to auction at June 12th. With its current R60 zoning, we think 37 homes might be built. The other property is at 117 Elm, comprising the 2.68 acres of John Nevins Andrews School. It has been a small, private school for many years. A few of us found out this Monday that it could be sold in June to Montgomery County Board of Education for a massive building project to seat 740 students. The property is far from the six acres usually required for such a school. This redevelopment could directly affect some 10 adjacent homes and four fronting properties. It could also hijack use of Spring Park during school hours, a park heavily used by young families. Elm Avenue, which is hardly a two-way street, would become a major diesel bus route. The county plan admits to, quote, "lengthy drop-off queuing," end quote, leaving many diesel buses running their polluting engines and blocking our narrow streets. I recommend that the council work actively with the county for the properties to meet county and local residents' needs, but be location appropriate. We already have two elementary schools and a middle school within walking distance of our neighborhood to meet an unfulfilled need. The McLaughlin property could become a small county magnet high school for integrated sciences in environmental biology, chemistry, mathematical modeling, and computer science. The location is a perfect site for these pursuits. The John Nevins Andrews School property could also meet a long-term need of a medium-scale recreation area. It could include an indoor and outdoor saltwater pool, as we are slated to lose the Piney Branch Pool under some plans, and we have no outdoor community pool. It could include two full-size indoor basketball courts, which are in short supply in our area. It should also include a large outdoor covered turf field and an exposed turf field for various sports. I hope the city will act on these recommendations.
Thank you. And the tax sale will become public tomorrow, and there will be more information up on the city website as soon as that information becomes public, so.
Okay. Is the city, as councilmembers, able to comment on the new plan?
Not at this time, no. I don't think we have any more information, other than, when MCPs was here, a month or so ago, they said that it was on a list of looking at it. The information that we have is that the last time we had information is that the Seventh Day Adventist is not interested in selling that property. So. All right, any other public comments tonight?
Hope so.
Nope. All right, then we'll go to council comments. And I just want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to kick us off, just because I know sometimes Ms. Machui needs to leave. I want to speak to two things, to make sure that people know, two things that you raised. In the Recreation Department budget this year, there is money to provide therapeutic recreation programs via contract with an appropriate organization that is in the budget this year. And the other thing that is in the budget this year is an additional $300,000 toward our Affordable Housing Reserve that would bring us up to $700,000 in that reserve, and the council has numerous times over the past year and a half reiterated its commitment to affordable housing. And we will have the strategic study done in August on that, and hopefully, more plans will solidify in early fall on affordable housing. Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Schultz?
I wasn't prepared to go first, but I guess I'll just have to. I wanted to start off on a lighthearted note, to say that, express gratitude to the, to the city for installing this new innovation called air conditioning into our auditorium. I think it's the first time I've experienced coolness in here. I don't know when. So, in honor of that, I know it's going to be cold, so I brought my, I'm ready to take care of it. I just wanted to, if anybody wants to borrow this, because they get too chilly, you'll have to pay me for it. That's just because we have been perspiring a great deal up here for the last several months. Okay, down to serious business. Well, I just wanted to say that last week, the Tacoma Langley Cross, the Crossroads Farmers' Market held, and it's night market, last Thursday, I believe it was, and it was darn chilly and cloudy, but it did not rain, and there was a one, a big, huge turnout, a lot of displays of things for sale, crafts, from people who participate in the market, some good food, and a steady stream of visitors coming to and to enjoy the, the night market, which went from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, congratulations to the Tacoma Food Network and their Crossroads Farmers' Market. And the actual market itself opens this Wednesday, May 31st, and it will be running this year six weeks longer than it has ever run before, and it will conclude December 27th. So, that's a great thing, because this means that it's apparently working very profitably for the benefit of the farmers and for the benefit of all the people that shop there. And the other thing I would just comment on was that last week, we had a well-populated meeting of the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association, which formally changed its name to the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association. Basically, that was, the evening was devoted to a presentation on the preliminary first concept drawings for the Glen Side sidewalks. And the plans were laid out, and I say this here for the benefit of people who live in Ward 6, and particularly in that particular stretch of road, which runs about a half-mile from Carroll Avenue down to New Hampshire Avenue, for a sidewalk that will be built, hopefully, in this coming fiscal year. The funds are in the budget to build the sidewalk, but right now, it's in the planning stages. And the meeting went very quick, very smoothly and quickly, a lot of good questions. There did not seem to be anybody taking any real umbrage at all to the proposed designs, so hopefully, we'll continue to move forward with that. And I know Ms. Braithwaite, our Head of Department of Public Works, would want me to remind everybody that before the sidewalk would get built, is that there will be another opportunity for all the affected residents to have, to vote yet one more time on whether or not they are in favor of having this sidewalk built. And that will be sometime, I guess, this summer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I think the air conditioning is great, by the way, too. Normally, I turn here, but I'm going to look at Mr. Dan Weaver instead for two quick things. I was recently at the monthly tenant meeting at Victory Tower, and they mentioned an issue, and of course, this gets into state highway, which always gets challenging, but at the intersection by Victory Tower, where Tulip Avenue hits Carroll Avenue, there is a traffic light, but it kind of only goes in two directions, and if you're coming down Tulip, it doesn't really, it's not really a light, and they're requesting that that could be added, and if we could check on where that stands. I think that's something that SHA has been looking at. And the second thing, which also falls in the same category, and I mentioned this to Ms. Braithwaite, who's not here, at the intersection of Philadelphia and Park, there's no crosswalk, and it's an area that a lot of students walk on their way to school, and there was talk about some funding for that through some of the grants, but that seems to sort of be in a uncertain status, so if you could check on that, too, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute and thank Mr. Lovelace for the work that he's done as the official peace delegate for the last seven years. I think you have certainly, not only demonstrated the reason that we ask you to be the peace delegate, but I think you've worked above and beyond the call of duty in going out and representing the city at peace demonstrations, advocating for peace here at the council meetings, and on the cable TV network. And I appreciate your taking the assignment seriously, and I look forward to many more years of you representing us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of joining Councilmember Kovar yesterday and going to the Immigration Forum that was hosted by IUDA, a nonprofit organization right across the board in Tacoma, DC. It was an interesting discussion about the status of immigration in our country right now, and I think the takeaway that I got from the discussion was that, something that we all in Tacoma Park know, but, but we need to encourage each other to do it, and that is to speak up and be active when we see things that we don't like. And when we see the government working in a way that we don't support, that we should advocate for those steps that we think we would support. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? No, I will turn it over to our Deputy C Manager, then.
Just as a follow-up to requests or inquiries that came up at the last council meeting, Councilmember Kovar inquired about the status of the replacement of stolen plants on Tulip. We expect that those will be replaced within the next two weeks. May is a big planting month for the city gardener and our Public Works crews, and these replacement plants are at the top of their long-to-do list. Councilmember Mayo reported that a tree at the intersection of Carroll and Laurel was obscuring the streetlights in front of Sun Trust. Our urban forest manager has scheduled some trimming and other maintenance in the area, which it may have actually been done already, and if it's not, it's scheduled to be completed this week. As far as information to share goes, the mayor already mentioned Celebrate Tacoma. We hope you'll join us this Saturday from 4:00 to 7:00. It's a family festival block party held in front of the Community Center on Maple, and it features arts, crafts, entertainment, music, games, and food from all over the world. It's really a celebration of Tacoma Park as a melting pot, and it's a celebration of the diversity of our residents who call Tacoma Park home and come from all over the world. We've been doing some ADA sidewalk repair this week, and it's going to continue through most of the summer. We're starting on Poplar Avenue, near New Hampshire Avenue, and working our way north. We'll be doing Spring Avenue and Gooty Avenue, and that work is likely to last until the end of June. When that's completed, our crews will be moving into Ward 1 to begin some ADA sidewalk repairs there. The Public Works Director asked me to note that Gooty Avenue will be particularly challenging to achieve compliance because of the presence of retaining walls in the narrow space now available in front of them for the sidewalks, so we're going to do the best we can in order to bring those sidewalks into compliance. An update on SHA's signal work. We received an update from them earlier this week, and they told us that they'll be working on the pedestrian signals at Piney Branch in Philadelphia, which should be activated this week on Friday. Their next focus will be on pedestrian signal work at the intersections of Grant and Carroll and Carroll and Tulip. We don't have an estimated timeframe for those, but they're, they're next on the agenda. Oh, good, I'll cross that one off. Just a reminder that this Friday is Bike to Work Day. If you haven't already signed up to Bike to Work, please do so. We're going to have two pit stops in Tacoma Park again this year, and you can find out more information at biketoworkmetrodc.org. I'm pleased to let you know that for the ninth year in a row, Tacoma Park has been named a Playful City USA Community. This is a recognition program honoring cities and towns that ensure all kids in their communities, particularly kids from low-income families, get balanced and active play that they need to thrive. The selection criteria for the award is based on equity, scale of effort, ease of access to programs for kids, collaboration with other agencies, and how the city uses play infrastructure as a way to attract people to the city. Special thanks goes out to the Play Lady, Pat Roomba, and Let's Play America for the work they do, not only in the course of their work with Let's Play America, but also in getting the application materials together to be awarded the Playful City USA Award. Just a reminder that as of last Thursday, the acting, the role of the Acting Police Chief transitioned from Captain Friscorn to- chief transitioned from Captain Friscorn to Captain Collington. To alleviate or help mitigate some, any confusion in the community, we've added that information to the top of the police department website. So now, when you go to the police department website, you can see who is currently the acting chief and get their contact information right away. We have prepared a draft request for proposals for county lobbyists, and I submitted it last week for review by the city attorney, as we do with all of our contracts and bids. Once we receive feedback from the city attorney, I'll finalize it and get it posted ASAP. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks. Any questions for the W.C. manager?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
We received notice last week that this week, Sligo Creek Parkway was going to be closed for the better part of five days during between 9:00 and 3:00. And I've noticed that it hasn't been closed, and I just wondered if we have any better information as to closures or the absence of closures, because I think people would like to know that.
Okay, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll certainly look into it and let you know.
I think in my conversations, and I maybe not be giving you accurate information, but I will say that I think they wanted that time because they're taking down the materials. So I think it has to do with when the larger trucks are coming in and the scheduling. But I knew, I know they wanted to reroute traffic a much longer time to give them that window, and our head of public works did a very good job of saying no.
Not too many people can successfully say no to the state highway administration.
Yep. Any other questions for the acting city manager? All right, then, we'll get on to our voting session. Our first item tonight is the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 tax rate. Since this is our second reading of this, would someone like to move this ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Mayo moved, Councilmember Schultz second. Any comments on this? Councilmember Schultz, is your, from before, or?
From before.
Okay. Councilmember, yours as well. Any comments on the FY 2018 tax rate before we take the vote?
No? I guess I will go, and I will say, I'm actually gonna, I've decided I'm going to vote against the tax rate this year. I will vote for our budget, but in really thinking about particularly what our reserves are at the time, and making sure that we're providing ourselves options for the unexpected, especially given this federal context, I just feel like we're cutting things a little too close this year. And so I'm going to vote no on the tax rate. So, we'll see, let's see, it's a second reading ordinance, so we need the roll call vote.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart. No. Okay, next, second reading ordinance adopting the, oh, sorry, first, the council needs to convene as the stormwater management board. Will someone move that, please?
So moved.
Councilmember Mayo, Councilmember Koreshi, second. All those in favor of convening as the stormwater management board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we have the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 stormwater management budget. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz moved it, second.
Second.
Councilmember Mayo, second. Any discussion or comments on this before we take the vote? No? Would the city clerk like to do the roll call? Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
No.
Councilmember Kovar.
No.
Mayor Stewart. Yes. Next, we have the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 budget. Would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Councilmember Koreshi, who's second?
Second.
Councilmember Mayo, second. Any conversation or discussion of that? Councilmember Koreshi, your lights on. Is it on for a comment or no?
No. Sorry.
Would the clerk like to call the roll? Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart. Yes. All right. Next, we have a resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the fiscal year 2018 budget. This is new this year. Every year, I think we try and improve our budget process, and Councilmember Mayo had had the suggestion that we include policy objectives or basically our intent when we had the conversations about the budget in a document. And we decided to have this in a resolution. Since we spend pretty much a month and a half really digging into the budget, and we have many conversations about it, it's nice to have a resolution that lays out our intent that always, that doesn't always come through in the budget document itself. So I'll ask if someone would like to move the resolution?
So moved.
Councilmember Mayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens. Any conversation or questions? Councilmember Kovar.
Yes, I mentioned this in an email, but I wanted to follow up on it here on the second whereas clause where we deal with the housing reserve fund. So essentially, we approved $400,000 the first year, and there would be $300,000. I guess we just approved the budget, so there is another $300,000. And $50,000 has been devoted to the home stretch program, which is the program that provides down payment assistance. So we're, we have a remainder of $650,000. And I had originally hoped that we would spend more of the money in the fund sooner. We've agreed to hold off on spending anything until the completion of the strategic plan for economic development and affordable housing that's being prepared by the outside contractor. And I think that will happen in the fall. And so this, and Councilmember Mayo, I think, was the one who initially suggested a percentage. I agree that it makes sense to save some of the funds so that we can allow it to build up over time. But I also think that most of what we're going to be able to do with this money is going to tend to be smaller efforts that benefit individuals. And for example, with the home stretch program, the $50,000 could benefit, you know, as many as 10 families. And I think there are a lot of other programs along those lines that could address individual families that would build up over time to be fairly significant, as opposed to sitting on the money for a long period, trying to save it for some sort of big project where we'd still need other outside financial partners. So I'd like to propose that instead of saying 15 to 30, that we set a target of 30, which doesn't mean that we would literally have to hit 30%, but if we say 15 to 30%, we're going to end up with 15%. And I think we ought to strive for something higher than that. So I would propose that. I wrote it up, if people want to see it.
And since we have to vote on it tonight, could you provide us with the language? Because this would be an amendment.
Yep. So that's in the second whereas clause. And, you know, to be clear, I know it's a little bit unusual to say, here's a target that we're not required to hit. If people think that idea makes sense, I'm open to saying it in some other way.
All right, since Councilmember Mayo, since you moved this, would you entertain this as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So then, if it's a friendly amendment, we'll have a conversation about the friendly amendment. And so would other people like to discuss this language change? Council, are you?
Yes.
Yes, good. Sorry.
I'm happy to support the proposed amendment. I see most of what is in here as a statement of intent throughout the whole resolution. And so the idea of setting a target, to me, is, you know, is match as that. And if it doesn't, if we don't make it to 30%, then it just simply sets up a conversation between the city staff and the city council and the public in the future. It says, well, we talked about a target of 30%, but, you know, for the following reasons, we think it's more appropriate to do X or Y or Z. So I think that's a, you know, a fine number to shoot for.
Councilmember Schultz.
That, that amounts to approximately, would be a target of $210,000, right? Just to put it in dollar terms. And I can't think of a good reason not to say that our hope is to be able to do this so that it sends a signal to the affordable, people that need affordable housing or are concerned about the, about it as a subject issue, will know where we, what our intent is. I think that's about all we're trying to say here in any case.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Should it matter? As a secondor, I will also accept it as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Great. All right. All right, so it's a friendly amendment. Any other comments on this? No? Do, I guess we should vote on this, yeah?
We don't have members.
On the friendly amendment, right? Or do we just accept it because it's a friendly amendment, and we just move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the reason for that, like, you can also move on.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the appropriate way for me to say it was, so moved and amended. That's effectively what we did?
Yeah. Okay.
That's all practice.
All right. So then, that one, we don't have to vote on, so Councilmember Mayo accepted it, and as a second, Councilmember Siemens also accepted it. All right, do we have any other changes, questions? Councilmember Schultz, are you still in the queue to speak to this?
No, I'm not in the queue. At least, I hope I'm not.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens, are you? Nope. Councilmember Mayo?
I am.
Okay.
I wanted, I don't, the language is easy, but I just didn't get any strong feedback from colleagues on the proposed whereas clause I suggested last week, which was to make clear that the council's intent is that our stormwater, the tree planting on private land is a priority or an appropriate use of our, of our tree, urban forest funds. And, but I didn't hear back from anybody, so I don't know if that's something that people are interested in. I know that the, we, through our city programs, for example, Arbor Day, you know, give people trees and have trees that go on urban land, but it's not set up in a way that we track, my understanding is, it's not set up in a way that we track those as part of our, you know, overall tree planting goal. And so the idea, for example, when we approved the budget amendment a couple of weeks ago, all those trees were being planted on public land, and the plan that identifies places to plant them is only public land. So the, again, it's a, it's a document about intent. The idea behind my suggestion was, and I can provide language if there's, you know, any interest from colleagues, would be to just amend the whereas clause around stormwater fee to indicate that, you know, planting on private land is appropriate.
Did you want to say appropriate or encouraged? Appropriate?
I think appropriate.
Okay. Just wanted to check. Cool. Any, would anyone like to speak to that change in the resolution?
Do we have?
I think we could probably add a whereas clause or add it to the stormwater one, that tree planting on private lands is an appropriate use of the city tree fund?
Yeah.
So when required in a certain situation, it would be unacceptable.
Right. It's just like putting it out there, because there has been some confusion.
Yeah, so the language could be additionally, in the first whereas clause, additionally, the city council, you know, recognizes that planting of trees on private land is an appropriate use of funding.
Did you get that, Jesse?
Yeah. Appropriate use of funding. Good. Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Koreshi, did you want to speak to this, or?
I actually wanted to speak to the previous amendment.
Oh, sorry.
Given what Councilmember Mayo said, which I agree with, that this is more a statement of intent, rather than wording it as Councilmember Kovar has drafted as a spending target, why not just remove the words 15 to and just say they would spend 30% of the reserve, recognizing that we're still going to have a discussion about it? I just find target to be a kind of a confusing word, but I get, I get.
I'm not sure if we're, if we still have to vote on this, or we accepted it, but if everybody agrees that saying we're going to spend 30 means we still might not, I was just trying to.
Right.
Trying to make it doubly clear that we weren't required to spend 30.
Which I understand it to be, and I think that's consistent with what Councilmember Mayo said, unless he corrects me. But that's, that's all I had to say. Otherwise, I have no objection to what Councilmember Mayo raises in amendment revising the whereas clause in the stormwater.
All right. So let's deal with the stormwater one, and then we'll go back to the housing reserve, just to make sure we're on the same page on that. Any other comments on adding to the stormwater fee whereas clause? No? Are we, all those, let's just do a vote, because it's easier, because I know where everybody is, and we come to closure. All those in favor of adding that to the first whereas clause, raise your hand. Okay. Councilmember Smith is not, so 6 to 1. All right, now, let's just go back to the whereas clause regarding the housing reserve. What we have now in front of us is revised language that Councilmember Kovar put forward. Councilmember Koreshi asked whether or not we really just take out the 15. I see both, I actually like the target and how it speaks, because I also think that this was, the intent of this document is also to make sure that when new council members come on, it's very clear what our intent was. And I think having that word target makes it sound like we're not stuck on that 30%. So for me, so I like how Councilmember Kovar, his wording he put forward. Anyone else like to speak to this before? I think of Councilmember Koreshi.
That's fine. And just for the record, I'm not proposing a revised amendment.
Okay.
It was just an idea I was floating. I'd be happy to vote on it as, as Councilmember Kovar has revised it.
Okay. Let's just do that for the sake of argument tonight. All those in favor of the changes that Councilmember Kovar has put forward, raise your hand. Opposed? One. All right. Any other changes or questions, discussion on the resolution? No? All right. All those in favor of the resolution establishing our policy objectives associated with the fiscal year 2018 budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No one opposed? Okay.
And were we, did we on the record articulate what the changes we're going to make in the first whereas clause? Are we, are we clear on that?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, and the city. Got it. Great. Now we have a consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Simmons.
Councilmember Mayo, second.
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now, we're up to our work session. And we're just two minutes behind for you. Now, we have our presentation of the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways Concept Plan.
Good evening.
Hi, Jamie.
So just to give a bit of background, in May of 2016, the city received a technical assistance grant from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments through their transportation land use connections program to develop a 30% design plans for a separated bike lane on the south side of New Hampshire Avenue. And the city, in conjunction with the council of government, selected RKNK as their consultant to develop these design plans. The project aims to convert the service lane on the south side of New Hampshire Avenue into a separated bike lane spanning from Auburn Avenue to Holton Lane. And the bikeway aims to complement the existing bike share expansion in Ward 6, and also aligns with the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor Concept Plan to translate, to transform New Hampshire Avenue into a multi-use boulevard. And with that, I will let RKNK go over the more detailed design plans. Thank you.
And as RKNK comes up, I just wanted to acknowledge that this is Jamie's last week with the city. She's been an excellent planning intern, and we will miss her greatly. Her last day is Friday, which is Bike to, Bike to Work Day, which she's helped us organize for the city.
Wow. So I'm sorry, I need to just say something, because I didn't know that. I just want to say, Jamie, thank you for all your hard work while you've been here. It's really, I didn't realize it was so soon you were leaving us, so thank you.
It's been really wonderful.
Thank you.
Not to be, to drag out the sentimentality, but I would second.
Not to be, to drag out the sentimentality, but I would second the mayor's comments. Really, I thought you'd done a really nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. So we just completed, as Jamie said, we just completed 30% design. Just to give you a little background, we were asked, we were scoped with performing a 15% design layout, roughly conceptual layout of the bikeway along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor on the southbound side. We met with agency stakeholders and received some comments at that meeting, and then we proceeded to develop our 30% design plans. Those are posted on the city's website. Thank you to Tacoma Park Safe Rowways Committee for their comments, as well as WABA. Some great comments to move forward when funding becomes available for final design. So with that, I'll proceed with a little bit more of the detail to give you some, an idea of where we are. Again, as Jamie had mentioned, the project location is along the southbound side of Maryland 650, from Auburn Avenue north to Holton Lane. And it's, excuse me, the project goals were to provide a low-stress, safe, enjoyable bikeway, and minimize impacts to utilities and property, and with that pedestrian and bicycle improvements at the intersections along that southbound side. So there may be some ADA ramp improvements, some traffic signal modifications that would be required as a part of that bikeway along the corridor. And as you, as everyone knows, stormwater management's also a requirement with the new impervious and the reconstruction, so we're, we're trying to come up with some potential low-impact stormwater facilities. Get into that a little bit later. And this would be a model for other bikeway retrofits in the area. That's our hope. So it'd be a great example, a sample project or pilot project, I guess, if you will. So again, 30% design was complete. Our initial approach, our design approach was to utilize the available frontage roads, and we carefully reviewed each segment of that corridor. It's not a continuous corridor with a continuous frontage road. There are some gaps in there, so there, that included some challenges. That led us to three key facility types. Shared use path adjacent to the frontage roads, a trail or shared use path through park and planning property. A lot of the park and planning property is, there's a gap north of, I'm sorry, north of Sligo Creek Parkway to, I don't remember the name of the, I'm sorry, drawing a blank right now. Sligo, I'm sorry?
Glen.
Glen, thank you, Glen Side, I apologize. Is mostly park and planning property. And we also looked at a shared frontage road lane with a contraflow lane. So we developed some typicals, and I'll get to that next. And there were also some challenges at the Sligo Creek Parkway intersection with the recently completed bridge modifications. There's a pinch point at that location, so it made it tough to, to design a bikeway through there. We need to do some modifications for sure to accommodate that. So, next slide? Sorry. Next slide, typical sections. As I mentioned, from Auburn to Larch, essentially we're using the frontage road, I'm sorry, we're using the existing sidewalk and widening out to use a shared use path, to develop a shared use path. I apologize if it's difficult to see. It's essentially an eight-foot wide path used for bikes and pedestrians. The challenge with this project was, you know, on-street parking is, is highly coveted along the corridor, so we're trying to, we're maintaining the existing parking, and that frontage road travel lane. So that's between Auburn and Larch. As you move further north, between Larch and Glen Side, a lot of that, that's mostly park and planning property, as well as some, some WSSC property along that corridor. And as you see, there's a buffer that varies between two and 10 feet, and shared use path continues along that stretch as well. Then, anybody, any, any questions so far? Keep going, okay. From Glen Side to Kingwood, that's where we pick up more frontage road that we have some flexibility with. There's an existing median that's very wide right now. It's being utilized by pedestrians. It's not an ideal situation, because the pedestrians are walking along southbound Maryland 350, I'm sorry, 650, Maryland 650. And so we were proposing to reduce that median and introduce a contraflow lane with a shared use lane, so that'll allow bikes to go in opposing directions along that stretch from Glen Side, actually, and it continues to, to Holton Lane as well. And the idea is to try to deter pedestrians, again, from walking on that median, and to, to kind of keep them further, further west on that sidewalk that's there. It's a four-foot sidewalk, but we would be providing the necessary passing zones to meet ADA compliance there. And the project ends at Holton Lane.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
Is this the proposal for both sides of the road, or?
No, sir. This is, the bikeway's just on the southbound side of Maryland 650, between Auburn and Hol. So again, some of the requirements to implement the bikeway, traffic signal modifications, just to accommodate the pedestrians and the bicyclists through, through that intersection. We're going to need to work with SJA moving forward to implement those modifications. We prepared a stormwater management concept with our 30% design plans. We're looking at porous asphalt, shared use path. There were four segments identified, and we are limited based on the slopes. Anything steeper than 7% roadway grade and sidewalk grade, we wouldn't be able to implement that. It's also pending geotechnical testing. We need to make sure that the soils are appropriate for infiltration and groundwater recharge, so that's something that we would do in the subsequent design phase. Another, some other stormwater options are microbioretention along the corridor, so it would be like a, like a micro rain garden or something that would filter the, filter the runoff. And again, subject to geotech testing. There will be utility impacts, mostly just shifting utility poles a couple feet. It's not like a major shift in a utility pole 10 or 20 feet. We're just talking about shifts to get the whis we need for the, for the bikeway and the widening of the sidewalk or shared use path. There are also property and right-of-way impacts. It's going to be a challenge. It's, most of the corridors with an SJA right-of-way, but as I mentioned, there's a gap between Sligo Creek and Glen Side that's park and planning property. So we're going to need to get their buy-in and their concurrence on our, our design. WSSC as well as the Bright Light Baptist Church and the Vanic LLC, which is a business at the Sligo Creek intersection. Some additional considerations in our, in our costs that we did for 30%, we're upgrading the existing high-pressure sodium lights to LED lights. We did this recently on the Ethan Allen Gateway Streetscape Project. It's going to be under construction here very soon. Pepco already upgraded those lights. So that's one potential thing we could do, is to get more energy-efficient lighting in here as well, and piggyback that onto, to this project. Next steps, as I mentioned, we're funded through 30%. The next steps are to talk with the utility and other agency stakeholders, SJA, park and planning impacted by the project, get, get their comments and concurrence on the layout, address their concerns, prepare an NRI FSD, which is required as part of the mandatory referral process through Montgomery County. So those would be the next big steps, and then the next, after that would be 65% semifinal design. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, you're in, part of this is in, in Ward 6, which is my territory. So I have several questions. The, the area from Glen Side up to Holton is got a number of residential properties that front onto that separate lane, I guess you, I call it auxiliary lane, but whatever the terminology is. It looks to me like, I know some of the people are concerned about losing parking on that stretch, but, but I'm, am I reading it correctly that the, the moving traffic lane there and the parking lane will not actually be disturbed?
That's correct. Between Glen Side and Kingwood, we're maintaining the on-street park, on-street parking, as well as the travel lane along the frontage road, southbound only. And it's going to be, it's right now, we're proposing a shared use lane, which means there'll be sharers, the bike would share the road with the, the vehicles on that, that frontage road. And again, very low volume, so there's not going to be a lot, a lot of conflicts perceived. Between Kingwood and Holton, just to clarify, that's actually, there is on-street parking there, but that, that's very short block. There are two houses along the corridor, and they have on, off-street parking, driveways on the side streets. So we were proposing actually for that stretch to eliminate the four or five spaces maybe of on-street parking-
Yeah.
-to get that contraflow lane.
Can I, in that regard, because I, folks aren't here, and I don't want to try to speak for them, since this is a highly personal situation, propose a time for you to come out and meet and address this plan, as you're doing here, perhaps the 30% plan with a, at a meeting of the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm assuming that you'd be happy to do that. I just want to make sure that, that we can and get it set up fairly soon. I hope it wouldn't have to be, it might require a specially called meeting, but I think it'd be worth, worth it to give residents an opportunity to, particularly those that have frontage on there. I think most people other than that would, are not going to be too concerned, one way or the other. I do have another question, though, with regard to the section, and this, don't follow this typical section here, I'm not sure I'm understanding it. North of Larch, between Larch and Sligo Creek Parkway, the upper end of that stretch, there's a commercial use there, and then there's a piece of property owned by the WSSC, which is just a flat dirt area. I don't know what-
Construction staging, I believe.
Yeah, construction staging area that's been used that for that. But, but between that construction staging area, going south to Larch, that is wooded area. There's a stream that runs very close to the, to the street, and the sidewalk is, what, narrow? Probably three feet. And on the backside of that sidewalk is a steel, solid steel guardrail. And then the, then the, the topography just literally drops right off, but just plunges right down. And I, I'm trying to figure out how, how you're going to put, what, what is you're going to be doing there?
Right, and that's, that's the park and planning property for the most part.
Yes, it is.
The property kind of saltus in and out between state highway right-of-way and park and planning property. You're right. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we need to get an NRI FSD, Natural Resource Inventory for Standalination, completed to evaluate the environmental features that are there. What we're proposing right now is to push the path further into that property. We would need a retaining wall to bridge that, that drop-off. So there would be some environmental impacts associated with the layout. There's really nowhere else to go with it.
No, I know, I know, it's-
But you're right, you're absolutely right.
There's just no space there. And I would think not only are you going to be able to retain a wall, you're going to have to build some cantilever or something to, to extend over that. I mean, I, I just know that area really well, because there's a quarterly trash pickup, or, you know, state highway, one of those arrangements, and I've picked up garbage along there for years. So I know that, that section intimately. I'm just curious, that's all, you know, I'm not expecting a thorough answer, but obviously what you're saying here is that that's still understudied.
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the, part of the outreach we need to do to follow up with park, again, park and planning and-
Now, the, the last question I have is that the bike, capital bike share is on the opposite side of the, of the avenue. And is there any, any design considerations that you would contemplate to facilitate bike riders from, you know, getting from that station across to the southbound side as safely as possible?
That's at the community center you're talking about?
Yes, in front, front of the recreation center.
Yes, sir. And that's actually one of the comments we received from the Safe Rowways Committee, was to consider a crossing on the south side of that intersection. Right now, there's only a crossing on the north side.
That's true.
We could add a more, it makes more sense, more intuitive to cross on the south side. We could provide connectivity with the bikeway to there. And then we would build a, I guess, a receiving ramp to, to get to the, to the bike share. So that can be looked at, and we can add some more signage and striping and anything else you can think of. Nathan can speak a little bit more to that.
Yeah, so I'm Nathan, the Bike and Pet Specialist with RK&amp;K.
Yeah.
We also looked at some other innovative design features that we could include to enhance safety throughout the corridor. So some enhanced warning signage, and then at the location you're referring to, could possibly put in a left-turn cue box for the southbound cyclist to cross with the side street when the side street gets a green. And then on the opposite side of the street, some enhanced signing to help folks understand how to get across the street with the vehicles back into the bikeway.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be great at some point if you could present some sort of a diagram like you have here, so that our residents and bike, the bike, the bike users in the area would be able to intelligently react to it, what you're sketching out here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good. Glad to hear that. By the way, they just installed up, up the hill at Holton Lane, where the Taco Bell is under construction. The, the developer there put in a second crosswalk at that intersection. So putting in a second crosswalk at this one at Merwood, which is one, one block, the second, the next traffic light down would actually kind of be conforming with what the people's expectations are for that area. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
That's all, Mel.
Yeah, thank you. Could you go, I think it's forward a slide? You had a slide that talked about, sorry, one more? Nope. Is this forward or backward? There we go. Thanks. You talked about the LED lights, and some of them have already been upgraded on, on New Hampshire Avenue?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm not clear from past presentations we've had from the city staff, so this is not necessarily a question for you. We've been trying to track our progress with getting streetlights within the city replaced. It's not clear to me what, which lights along state highways we pay for and which we don't, and so which, percent of which ones have been upgraded versus not. So if you could help figure that out, Acting City Manager, Dan Weber, that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? I know this was only to do a 30% design, but is there any estimate on what the budget would be if this went forward?
We, our 30% construction cost estimate with utility relocations was about 3.8 million, and that included a major, you know, structure modification to the Sligo Creek Bridge. So it's, it's not cheap, but yeah, so.
The structure modification is half of the budget? Like, was that, is that a really big piece of it?
It was, it's probably about $300,000 or so, about what we expect.
Okay. Great. And I guess this is actually a question for the Acting City Manager, is whether or not something could be sort of put together and sent to the administrator of state highway. We had a successful meeting with him about a month or two ago to talk about state highway work in Tacoma Park. He is, he expressed an interest in innovative new type of projects. We talked to him a great deal about New Hampshire Avenue as a whole and the need to do things there, so I think just even getting this on his radar screen would be a good thing to do.
Can I, can I just, can I just add that SJA was, not, not the administrator, but SJA representatives were at these meetings that we've had with 15%, 30%. So they have been engaged, and they did give us direction on next steps moving forward.
Great.
Who to contact, so.
Terrific.
Okay. Thanks.
Oh, but this is the 30%. What is the next stage?
It would be semifinal, but as I mentioned-
60% or something like that?
60, 65, semifinal.
And how would the, what would that show? What would that reveal that we don't?
More detailed analysis on the grading and the impacts, you know, where we have retaining walls, a little bit more on heights and what's required with, with the drainage structures. For example, there's some outfall pipes, for example, on the park and planning property, down to those streams you had mentioned. down to those streams you had mentioned. More detail.
That, that stream that I've referred to, up until last year, had had periodic clogging because it comes down, it drains from the Larch area and had gotten clogged and then backed up. And as you know, that, the swale in there is deep and steep, and it had filled, had periodically filled up and was literally pouring over the sidewalk into the street at times. It has not been, I think it's been cleaned out or whatever they did. I have no idea, but I just want you to have a heads up that when, when we get these steady rains like we've had recently, in the, until about a year ago, we were having pretty regular flooding in that area. So just, you're going to know if you don't already know a hundred times more about it than I do.
All right. I don't see any other lights on. I think we're done for the evening. So thank you so much for coming and for working on this with our residents and our staff and State Highway. And so, and we hope at some point this gets to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right. That is it for our agenda this evening. So we are adjourned.